Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Malani? Trustee Compass?
Here.
Trustee Reardon?
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski? Mayor Pico?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the July 15, 2024, regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of July 15, 2024.
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
You don't just get to walk up to the podium, so I will call people up to speak as we go. Also, there will be no comment from anyone else on the floor, there'll be no yelling, cheering, clapping, this is a business meeting and a board meeting. There'll be no extraneous talking. The people that come up to the board floor get three minutes to speak and keep your comments to board-specific agenda items. So, beginning with Vince Kelly.
My first question for the people of the Orland Township, how many people did not receive the notification about the annexation? Okay, thank you. By state law, we're required to have 15 days' notice, and the majority of my neighbors did not receive theirs. That's important, because there's a lot of information we don't know about. People that have been in these homes for generations wouldn't be able to keep their homes, afford their homes with the new taxes, and not going around, they wouldn't miss a chance to respond to this. So, they're going to need notification and time to actually research what's going on and what the right choice would be. Why the rush? Not enough notice, by law, there has to be more. We have open questions. Who pays for any mandatory upgrades to water, sewer, stormwater, streets, streetlights, sidewalks? How many trees that were 300 years old that were planted by grandfathers are going to be killed? And why? We didn't ask for this. When will it change to be mandated? And no, we're not using Village of Orland Park resources. We don't have police coming in guns blazing, that's why I live here. So, there is no, the police force has very rarely been called, and I've never seen any Orland Park Police in Orland Township. Neither have any of my neighbors. It's been Cook County, in fact, we have a Cook County Sheriff that sits on my block regularly. I've never seen an Orland Park Police Officer in our district. We shop in every local store, our monies contribute to all the taxes in the area. This action would serve no one. The Orland Township could say we've never seen an Orland Park Police respond to a call in our area, I'd love to see an audit of the responses. For the first time in Orland Park history, in over 130 years, there were two audits missed. And then, we were told that there was nothing given between this office and the Comptroller, and it was publicly made known that the Comptroller actually did communicate. So, again, we all have a lot of questions about the people that want to run our area. There's a lot of questions in the air, and there's nothing but time, there's no rush for this. Most of my neighbors here were unaware of this. We request proper time to actually research this information and ask our questions and have them answered before such a major decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I think I'm later on the agenda, it's moving for approval for hometown veterinary partners.
This is for all items that are on the agenda coming up?
Oh, thank you. It's for approval for hometown veterinary partners. I was here a few weeks ago seeking special use permit and was informed that I needed 10 today to get approval on that.
Okay, yeah, you are on the agenda, and I believe it's on the consent agenda, right? It is not, but it's on the agenda later, so you're supporting the project?
I'm here for hometown veterinary partners, supporting this project, yes.
Any other comments you want to make about that project?
No.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for comments.
Mayor Pico and staff, thank you for the opportunity to, there we go, thank you for the opportunity. My wife Kathy and I, we moved to the area from Tinley Park, we did a cost-benefit analysis, and, as most homeowners do, and part of that cost-benefit analysis of moving to our area, our home at 8102 Forest View, was obviously the money that we would have to spend on the home, plus the taxes. And then, the cost would be, if we lived in unincorporated Orland Park, we would realize that there would be additional fees that we would have to pay, which we have. So, we had four children that participated in OIA, library, went to the pool, and we understood that there was an additional fee that had to be paid by our children to participate, because we weren't a resident of the Village of Orland Park. So, this is a decision that I made, and I think most of the people in our town, or, excuse me, in our neighborhood, made that decision, and probably their first or second choice was lower taxes. And it was just the cost of living decision that was made. So, by changing the structures so that, against our consent and against our will, the indomitable annexation of our neighborhood that would drastically increase the cost of living for all the residents. One of the things that I think that I would ask, because we're talking a large amount of money to improve infrastructure, like water, sewer, I think that an economic study should be done to determine what the costs are going to be, to bring in these utilities to our area, and what the impact is going to be on the actual cost for doing this. Because I think, in an area where we're at, you have over 100 homes, you're probably, what we're talking about is a number into tens of millions of dollars.
Twenty seconds.
And then, twenty seconds. So, the train has left the station, and all I ask is that, for truth and transparency for us as residents, that the train doesn't stop until all land that is unincorporated is eventually incorporated into the Village of Orland Park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This regards Silver Lake Drive annexation. Basically, I have not much to add to what Vince had to say, other than the fact, as you all know, it's a very unique area, it's not an area that is conducive to sidewalks, streetlights, or frankly sewer and water, because we're all unwell and septic. We do have regular police coverage, and the bottom line is that frankly, it isn't broke, there's no need to fix it. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Warren Winker. My address is 14955 South Wolf Road, Orland Park, Illinois 60467. At this time, I do not wish to incorporate my property into the Village of Orland Park. The property surrounding me has not been developed since I moved there in 1980, 44 years ago. There is no benefit for me at all to annex into it. In the letter that I received, right here, if you wish to view it, does anybody wish to view it?
No, we're familiar with it.
All right. I'm included with my neighbor across the street in the property. I'm opposed to this document. I should be single, it should just have my name on it. I pay taxes, so does she. My parcel should be separated from that parcel. I am not connected to the Yonkers property at all in any way. Wolf Road separates our parcels. I wish the Village of Orland Park to drop this legislation in its entirety from the record and not be forced into annexation. Also, I was not told about March, or this letter, nobody told me nothing about it. They told my neighbor, I guess that's why you're trying to include me into my neighbor's business, which is, seems like that's not legal. That's a lie that I was notified several times, multiple times. You know, the corn and the soybeans, they don't need any police protection. What do they need police protection for? They don't need sidewalks, corn? Corn and soybeans, what do they need sidewalks for? I'm surrounded by farmland. There's no sidewalks, there's no need for street lamps, or Lake, I don't even have Lake Michigan water.
Twenty seconds.
What's that?
Twenty seconds.
The cornfields don't need sewers and sanitations or a library card? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. If anybody else here to speak for an agenda-specific item that didn't sign in?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name.
My name is Terry Shepherd, I live in the area that you're seeking to annex, just outside of the Village of Orland Park. So, bit about myself, I'm a finance attorney by trade, I've supported the diligence and transaction of over a billion dollars in deals over the course of my career involving both public and private matters. My wife is a litigator at the University of Chicago Law School, I studied the intersection of corruption and campaign finance. So, let's talk a little bit about what's going on here. You sent a law firm to try to trick people into giving notice based on an annexation proposal, involuntary by the way, that I'd never heard of, my neighbors never heard of. You know, putting aside basic tenants of how republic governance is supposed to work, I see that as an adversarial action. So, I took a little bit of time to look into the city of Orland Park's finances, and a few things of interest. You've been increasing your debt pretty steadily over the last couple of years, your financial projections have seen increasingly rosy projections for future revenue streams. I've also noticed that you've stopped publishing your audits since 2021. That's an interesting change in practice. You know, typically speaking, when I see these sorts of things, at a minimum, it's evidence of financial mismanagement, at a maximum, it's evidence of something that I would contact law enforcement regarding. Clearly, this is a cash grab, you've heard from the people here why it is that they're not interested in being a part of your village, but here's my pitch to you. Do you really want me, as a resident? Do you want me to look more seriously into the matters as to why it is that you clearly are so desperate for the finances from this area? There's obviously no public interest benefit here, so there must be something that you're trying to hide. I'm happy to take questions, by the way.
Do you have any other comments to make?
Your choice, do you want me as a resident?
I'm asking you, if you have more comments to make, you clearly didn't hear the direction it was given, you have three minutes, do you have any more comments to make?
I'll say one last thing, you don't want me looking into this in more detail.
We understand the threat, thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak?
Good evening. I'm just talking about item N, 1456782nd Avenue, the annexation, I was here last meeting, so thank you again. I believe Mr. Walsh, my attorney, was speaking with you regarding this. So, I've had time to get on the same page with you guys, we're okay with the annexation, my neighbor and I are willing to cooperate. However, we would just like an agreement to solidify the idea that we, well, solidify the fact that we won't be on the hook for any sewer, sewage, or water. I believe that we had a verbal agreement in place between my attorney, Jim Algean, and you, or your office, I apologize. And that's why I'm here, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Sorry. Thank you. I would like to ask if I can, if we can also just extend our annexation, or the decision until the next meeting, until we've had time to draft our agreement. What we want to do is, we want to close this gap as quickly as possible, we don't want to, you know.
So, you want to voluntarily annex, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we are looking to do that, sure, we'll cooperate, we just want an agreement in place.
Okay. All right, thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Francesca Sturrit.
Excuse me.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, can you state your name?
Francesca Sturrit. I'm a resident of Silver Lake Drive, I'm talking about the, I'm opposed to the annexation of Silver Lake Drive. I know everybody has come up here to discuss taxes, and granted, first and foremost, we all pay our taxes on Silver Lake Drive and surrounding areas. I know I pay well over five digits in taxes every year, okay? And that's not, that's not why we all come here arguing about it. The reason that I live where I live and why I chose to move there is for nature. We back up against forest preserves, we are conservationists there, I have well water by choice, I don't want Chicago water. I pay for septic, I pay to get it kept up, because we believe in nature, and if you want to take Orland Park, and you want to just, you make enough money in revenue in other ways, you make enough in business, you don't need, my house was the Cooper's house, the Coopers donated all the land, sold all the land to build Orland Mall 50 years ago, I am the second owner of that home. My neighbor over there who's not talking, there she is, she runs goat yoga, she has goat yoga, she works hard to protect animals, she has 20 animals on her land, my other neighbor has a goat. We are here, I will not, I don't care about the four grand more a year in taxes, who cares? You can get it somewhere else, you have a development right over here happening. What I'm here for is, we don't want your roads, any more roads, we don't need any more sidewalks, we don't need any more streetlights, we don't need any more Chicago water, we will pay our taxes, I will wait 10 minutes for Cook County Police to show up, I will wait, I don't mind, I will give you the money, I will give you the money not to be annexed. And everyone here argues. So, we're not here just because we all want to save a buck, we all pay, we all go to your businesses, we go there, we eat in your restaurants, we love Orland Park, I'm a born and raised South sider. And Mr. Pico, sir, I am a fan of yours as well, and I was highly disappointed that I didn't get this letter, that I'm here and being forced to do this. At least grant us the opportunity to do our research and come here with appropriate representation, and talk to you, and reason with you, at least, let's make a plan, right? Let's make a capital plan then, let's look at it, let's discuss it, what are you going to do with all the animals? What about the animals? What about her animals? What about my animals? What about my neighbor's animals? We're just going to euthanize them? Where do they go? Because we can't have them if you annex us, I can't have, nobody can have them. The Foster Day? For the, so, I'm just saying, let's be real, I get it, if you guys need to do this, cool, but let's talk about it, let's make a plan, let's not shoot from the hip where it could be detrimental not only to us, as well as to you, sir, it could be detrimental on both levels. So, let's do our best to work together, being that we all care about Orland Park, it is our community, but let's do something right, let's do it the right way, is what I'm saying, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here to speak on any agenda items?
Yes, good evening, my name is Bob Hart, I'm a resident of Silver Lake Dells, 8104 Forest View Drive. Little history on myself, I'm a real estate broker in Orland Park for almost 50 years. I was originally raised in Payless Heights, very happy in Payless Heights. When I got married, I bought a house, or bought a lot in Silver Lake Dells I was going to build. Long story short, I was busy, a house came up in Catalina, I bought a house in Catalina. Very, very happy with Catalina, wonderful area. I always liked the feel of Payless Heights, I always loved Silver Lake Dells. I bought the house I have in Silver Lake Dells because it reminded me of Payless. No sidewalks, no streetlights, larger lots, every house was different, this is what I chose to move to. This is why people are buying in Silver Lake Dells. Again, I've been a broker for 50 years, I don't know anybody that's in Silver Lake Dells that wants annexation, they don't feel they need it, they want properties that are different, they don't want sidewalks, they don't want streetlights, they don't want sewer and water, we don't feel we need it. So, I don't know why, whose idea was to annex this area when you have residents that don't want this, there's no reason for it. Everything that we have works out very well with Cook County, okay, with Orland Township, with the county police and things of that sort, we don't need to come into Orland Park. I don't see any benefit, and I certainly know the costs if we do come in are going to be much higher. So, I think if you listen to the people, you'll find out people do not want this, they didn't ask for it, how did it get on the agenda? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. My name is David Apps, I'm a resident of Orland Park, my family lives at 14655 South 82nd. The kind woman who just spoke before mentioned goat yoga, I just wanted to touch on that a little bit more detail and provide some details on the benefits that that has and the community benefits that we've been able to offer to other districts of our area, including the library and the school districts, 135 and 230, as well about out-of-district, school districts, community groups that provide, most importantly, mental health benefits through yoga with these wonderful goats. My mother, Michelle, over there, started this really out of the kindness of her heart, it was no profitable business venture, but it's grown into so much more through community support. And our primary concern, while we can empathize with fellow neighbors of property taxes, financial implications, and utility implications, is the wellness of our beloved animals there, over 20 goats, many of which are, otherwise would not be able to survive on any other livestock farms or homes because of health conditions where they've really been fostered by my mom and given a lot of veterinary support to live their lives out naturally. If, while we encourage you to table this consent agenda item for our area for further meetings so that we can understand all of the implications to our organization here and have that solidified with us so we're more comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else here to speak? Okay, thank you.
There's someone else coming.
Someone else coming up, okay.
Hi, my name is Lisa Grant, and I am a Cooper, and if any of you know anything about the Coopers, my family, my ancestors put, built, pretty much did a lot in building this community. And, Mayor, we are a fan of yours, we know that community is important to you, and community is important to us, too. And in Silver Lake Dells and the surrounding areas, we have our own sense of community and a pride for our community, there's no need to change that. We've put, we've invested a lot of time and a lot of money into our own properties in maintaining the way it works for us. And, you know, we've raised families in these communities where we've had to pay extra to Park District, to Library, and that was fine, because we knew what we were getting into. Anyway, we just request that you think about our community and everything that we stand for, and please don't change that on us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else to comment? For the future, it's very helpful if you sign in for us. Makes it a lot easier on Allison, she's doing minutes.
I know some of you did sign, have the sheets, if you wanted to give them to the staff members on the side, that'd be helpful.
Thank you. My name is Angela Riley, I live on Silver Lake Drive. I've heard from a lot of residents in my community and in the meeting tonight, and if there's one thing for sure, it's that folks do not agree with the annexation, whether it be one way or the other. So, my ask, instead of the village's current attempt to do an involuntary annexation, that the village take a step back and let potential residents have a say in whether or not they're a part of the Village of Orland Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to comment?
Accounts payable July 16, 2024 through August 5, 2024 approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable July 16, 2024 through August 5, 2024 in the amount of $5,839,802.21.
Any comments?
Call roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for July 19, 2024 approval, item B, fall household hazardous waste recycling event, item C, Lions Club Christmas tree resale and resales, item D, 147th Street Block Party, item E, anything weather multi-year service agreement, item F, Jane Caliendo Memorial Foundation 5K Fee Waiver, item G, amend Title VII, Chapter 18, increased number of video gaming license ordinance, item H, utility excavator and trailer purchase, Sourcewell Purchase Cooperative Proposal, item I, special event permit for Orland Township's Pet Palooza, Pet Pantry fundraiser, community event, 1,000 people, item J, facility lighting improvements, FLC Civic Center, and PNE dispatch, item K, Orland Park Health and Fitness Center HVAC Improvement Project Train Turnkey, item L, 14900 and 14955 South Wolf Road Annexation, item M, annexation of surrounded unincorporated territory Silver Lake Drive property, item N, 14555 to 1456782nd Avenue Annexation, item O, Centennial Park Aquatic Center Deck Furniture ITB Number 24-052, item P, Portillo's Hot Dogs LLC-20, Orland Square Drive, New Drive-Thru Restaurant Special Use Permit and Modifications Ordinance, item Q, an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter VI, Section 86-6-8-2 of the Orland Park Village Code in regard to public camping, item R, Vintage Crossing Swale Modifications Agreement. I will entertain a motion to approve items A through K and O through R.
Still moved.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Call roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico? 14900 and 14955 South Wolf Road Annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Reardon?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appealing, ordinance number 5889, and annexing property 14900 and 14955 South Wolf Road surrounding unincorporated territory.
Second. And this is, we're not going to repeat this three times, but, so, George, if you could please go through the background you and Development Services of the annexation, as well as the letters that were sent, and all of that as well in the process, and do that with our attorney first, please.
Sure, just a little background, an annexation study was first conducted in 2007, and subsequently updated in 2022. 2022, there were attempts to, for involuntary annexation, letters went out, and then another attempt occurred in 2023. So, in 2024, after a number of attempts, the annexation study program was approved by the Village Board, and now it's being implemented. I think Steve can talk about the reasons that certain properties are being, are part of this study.
Sure, so, the study was presented and all the areas were identified, and just for the...
Can you move the mic a little closer, it'll be a little easier here?
So that everybody understands the whys behind this. So, first, we were looking at properties that were wholly surrounded by the village, which, under state law, we are allowed to annex involuntarily with just the public notice. For those of you that are at Silver Lake Dells, this is not your hearing tonight, so those notices were sent out, I think, this last week, so you should be getting them. I believe it's going to be the next meeting, the 19th. So, for everybody else, you got the notices in the mail, that's the official notification. For those of you that are touching the forest reserve or developments that are touching the forest reserve, that's considered a boundary. So, if you are surrounded by the village or another town and the forest reserve... So if you are surrounded by the village or another town and the forest preserve, and that area is less than 60 acres, you follow, you fall under this law, which allows us to involuntarily annex. Just so you're aware, any other town that is touching the forest preserve could also involuntarily annex you, which would be Oak Forest or whichever palos is touching the forest preserve on the other side. So that's the second group. So first, we're the ones that have commercial, potential commercial impact. The second, we're the ones that were adjacent to other towns. That's the groups that we're in right now, when that means through forest preserves. And that's the priority in which we're taking them, and that's the ones that we're doing right now, we're in the second group.
And, and Dennis, could you just highlight the, the notification?
Sure. The, the, the process for notification of, of course, the annexation is set forth by statute. It doesn't necessarily have to go to the property owner. It goes to the last taxpayer of record, all of which were notified. Every single, every single one of the annexations that are set for, for tonight have been properly noticed pursuant to the law.
Okay. And the Board, do you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy.
On this particular property, where, do we, do we have confirmation that they were legally notified?
I think Dennis just gave you that.
That's, so that's been, been there. And then, when it comes to what's the cost of, to the homeowners, it's just the additional real estate cost is my...
I've got some information on that, so I'll get to that in my comments.
Okay, well, wait for the comments.
Yeah, it's just, it's property tax to the village, property tax to the library district if, if someone gets annexed into the Village of Orland Park.
Okay, and is there, is, from the, another question I have is, will there be grandfathering of animals or other?
So I have, I have comments on all that.
Okay, then I'll defer to your comments.
Any other comments from the Board? Done? Okay. So I, I know there was a letter going around for, that was sent to people and indicated that taxes would go up $4,000 to $6,000. I can tell you that homeowner that sent that letter, I actually calculated it from their tax bill, their tax bill would go up $532 to the village and $268 to the library. And I do understand that people don't want to pay more taxes, but the other thing said in that letter is they're drawn to the area for the scenery and the local amenities. Well, those amenities include Orland Park's open lands, includes Orland Park's parks, both of which Orland Park residents pay for and people enjoy at Orland Park residents' expenses. I'm sure that most of you use 143rd Street and 151st Street on a regular basis. Those are also completely Orland Park, taken care of by Orland Park. You likely use La Grange, the medians of which are all maintained by Orland Park, which is a pretty, about a million dollars a year, actually, to do that. So again, we, Orland Park residents pay for that. And I know that you all pay for schools. Our police department provides the protection, the crossing guards, and the traffic control for those schools. Again, paid for by Orland Park residents, not everyone that goes to the schools. Also, when you call 911, Chief, 911 calls go to who? It goes to the Village of Orland Park, correct? Yeah, so again, that's another service that the village is covering on that. In 911 calls to any of these unincorporated areas, who, Orland Park is the responding, the first respondent 95% of the time?
95% of the time, Orland Park, it's on scene prior to Cook County.
So we are having a Board meeting. It is not an engagement with discussion back and forth. The discussion is here on the Board. You had your opportunity to speak. Now the Board gets their opportunity to speak. That's what this is. Anyone else who has an outburst, we will have, we will remove you from here. So Chief, so we are the, we are the respondent. We don't investigate, right? The investigations are turned over, but if there's an emergency?
If there's an emergency, the Orland Park Police are there prior to Cook County.
Okay, so, and everyone here, everyone who lives in Orland Park or in Orland Park address benefits from that. Now, some of the other things is that, streetlights and sidewalks. And I can tell you that we have several areas that are annexed, have been annexed in the past, they don't have streetlights and they don't have sidewalks, and they still don't. In fact, we just did, we just redid all the roads for those, and we had to bring them up to the new, the village standards, up from the county standards. There was no additional cost to anyone there to bring those roads up. How much did we spend on Fernway? About $10 million to upgrade all that? And there's, and they didn't get lighting, they didn't get sidewalks, so we just redid all of the, all the ditches, all of the stormwater and all that, because that's the other thing that you benefit from is your stormwater system is connected to our stormwater system. And so we deal with all that. So those are all things that, that we get. Additionally, when it comes to water and sewer, like areas like Fernway and others, they're still well-inseptic, correct?
Yeah, exactly. The Fernway is Illinois American Water, actually, but that was before they were part of the village.
Right, so, so we have no desire to change that. Of course, if you decide that you want to connect to our water, but anyone who decides they want to connect to our water, that's their cost to connect to our water. But there's no requirement, so that, that's not a desire here for any of that. At the end of the day, and then someone accused us of fiscal malfeasance, well, you're, you're welcome to bring a lawsuit. Please, you feel free. We're more than happy to defend that. And as far as debt, I will tell you, you obviously didn't look back very far because debt, when I got here, was $110 million, and I think it's 85 now. So it's much lower than when we took office. So we have added some debt the last couple of years. We brought the debt down so specifically so that we could do these things and do some of the projects that had been ignored for 20-some years. As far as the taxes to, to the point, the House, I looked at, $700, I mean, even with everyone in this room, the taxes are not the rationale for this. The rationale for this is two reasons, as we said. The reason we looked at this annexation, the first priority was anything that could be commercialized. There was a Cook County property that was large enough that could be commercialized and potentially a commercial property. Why? Because we already know that there were people looking to put gaming establishments, strip clubs, and other things in Orland Park. So the way that we stop that is we annex that, and then they have to go through our zoning. So one particular place is the Vista Motel at 159th and Wolf. We'd never had it before. There's not going to be any changes. They're grandfathered in to all of the stuff that they have. Now, when someone buys that property, they'll have, if they make any changes to it, they do have to change that. So people are grandfathered in. So that was, that's the first rationale. The second rationale is any homes that can be annexed by someone else. And the reason why is because we've seen this in the past. We've seen Orland Hills grab properties across La Grange Road in Orland Park, clearly not Orland Hills, and we've had to deal with that annexation and those problems that are associated with that. And now it follows Orland Hills rules, not Orland Park's rules. So the rationale for your homes is because we don't want to see Oak Forest annex you. We don't want to see, and they could literally, I mean, we could vote on it tonight and annex you. They could, they could notice you just like we did, and next meeting, they can annex you. So that's why we're doing it, because we are, we want to make, make sure we're defending the contiguous borders of Orland Park. And we've seen this going on, we've seen it going on with the county, and frankly, none of us like it. So that's, that's why we're doing this. We're doing this for the whole of, all of Orland Park. And some of the information you were given was misinformation. However, just, and you heard someone speak tonight who came here at the last meeting because he was noticed, and we'll do the same thing tonight that we did for him, which is we tabled the motion so you could have an opportunity. You've been noticed, there've been letters sent. I know there were letters sent asking people to voluntarily annex, but it'll give you an opportunity to contact us. We'll give you all of the information and answer all of your questions, and then we'll address this at the next meeting. So I will entertain a motion to postpone this to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll. You pick.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, by the next meeting, you mean the next regularly scheduled Board meeting?
The next regularly scheduled Board meeting, which is August 19.
Is that for all three, or do you want to do them separately?
Well, we got to do them separately.
Okay.
Annexation of surrounded unincorporated territory Silver, Silver Lake Drive property.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Annexation of Surrounded Unincorporated Territory Silver Lake Drive Property.
I will entertain a motion to postpone this to the August 19 meeting.
So moved. Second.
Call roll.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
14555 through 14567 82nd Avenue Annexation.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance annexing property 14555-14567 82nd Avenue, surrounded unincorporated territory.
Second.
And on this particular property, they were here at the last Board meeting, and as you heard, they're, they're willing to annex now, now that they know all of the information. But Dennis, unless you have a reason that we can't, we should postpone this, we'll postpone this to allow you guys to just reach a voluntary, get a voluntary annex, annexation agreement, which is much, much easier for us.
So moved. Second.
Okay, hold on. I'll entertain a motion to postpone the meeting to August 19, the next meeting, August 19.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Village of Orland Park, Village Hall and Civic Center signage, 14700, Rabenia Avenue, certificate of appropriateness.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action regarding case number 2024-0444, also known as Village of Orland Park, Village Hall and Civic Center signage.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Village Hall and Civic Center Building signage.
We just did that in?
No.
Mr. Mayor? I see it's separate. I, I move to waive the bidding process and approve sole source proposal from One-Up Signs for the installation of signage at Village Hall and Civic Center for the amount not to exceed $42,542.50, which is $38,675 plus 10% contingency of $3,367.50, and authorize the Village Manager to execute all related contracts subject to Village Attorney review, and authorize the Village Manager to approve a change order not to exceed the contingency amount.
Are there any questions or comments? George, can you tell us why we're sole sourcing this?
We have a, an existing relationship with One-Up Signs, and they have, they have demonstrated time and again that they're able to assist us with very unique-type projects. This one is unique in the sense that it is going to go on our, on our clock tower. It's something that was not envisioned as a part of the original plan, so there's going to be a lot of coordination that we're, that we're going to have to do with our public work staff as far as, we're going to do the electrical work, they have to bring the lifts. So we've seen them do the work for the naming at the police department, and they do very good work. We know their price is reasonable, but really because of the coordination that we have to work here.
Okay. Comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Hometown Veterinary Partners, 18000 Wolf Road, Special Use Permit.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
It was Trustee Healy. Oh, Trustee Healy.
He's tired.
Give me a break. I got involved at the same time. Sorry, I couldn't hear.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action for case number 024250, also known as Hometown Veterinary Partners.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
I'm just going to talk loud. Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Downtown Orland Park Special Use for a Plan Development.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the Committee of the Hall Recommended Action for case number 2024-0188, also known as Downtown Orland Park Special Use for a Plan Development, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Granting Approval of a Concept Plan and Special Use for a Plan Development for Downtown in the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Magic touched. I did that 100 times. Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Mayor Pico? Call for Public Hearing, Ordinance Proposing the Approval of Business District Plan and Designation of the Main Street Triangle Business District in the Village of Orland Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance proposing the Approval of a Business District Plan and Designation of the Main Street Triangle Business District in the Village of Orland Park.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Call for Public Hearings, Joint Review Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance calling for a public hearing and a joint review board meeting to consider the second amended eligibility report for the amended Main Street TIF project area, the downtown Orland Park TIF project area, the designation of the two redevelopment project areas, redevelopment and redevelopment projects for the Village of Orland Park Downtown OP TIF District.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Intergovernmental Agreement and Resolution for the Property Conveyance between the Village of Orland Park and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. I move to approve the resolution of the Village President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Orland Park authorized conveyance of property owned by the village to the Forest Preserve District of Cook County in exchange for certain temporary and permanent easements. And I move to approve intergovernmental agreement covering the following items. Transfer of ownership of the Nature Center and attached property in the Village of Orland to the Forest Preserve District of Cook County, and conveyance of permanent and temporary[1646.62] Preserve District of Cook County, and conveyance of permanent and temporary easements from the Forest Preserve District of Cook County to the Village of Orland Park. And I move to authorize the village president and village clerk to execute the closing documents for the above property land conveyance, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
George, you want to give a summary of, a summary of this, and then I'll add to it?
Absolutely. So, the village has been working with the Forest Preserve District now for, and I think the mayor will emphasize this later, for many, many years, on a, for intents and purposes, a land swap. The village owns the nature center and the adjacent wetlands. Those were acquired at some point, and that development, or the nature center was then built. As part of the process for the 143rd Street widening project, the village has taken upon itself to go through Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering. 143rd Street from LaGrange to Will Cook is a state road, so we're under no obligation to do that. We're just doing that because we know, the village knows how important 143rd Street is. So we're putting all the pieces in place, once the funding is available, for that project to happen. So, as part of this project, the forest preserve, in exchange for, they will get the nature center. The forest preserve is in the business of these, you know, wetlands and nature preserves, and in exchange, we will get temporary and permanent easements along 143rd. But that also includes the extension of West Avenue into the, into Park School, if the school district ever wants to build a loop through their parking lot. Right now, they don't have that option. So, this has been a long journey, but through the perseverance of Kreschid and a number of other people, including the mayor, we're able to get this finally resolved. The Forest Preserve District has approved all of these. They've, it's gone through the Cook County Board. Three separate approvals were required, and those have all been done. The closing, all this will occur at the end of the year.
And there's also tree mitigation fee waivers too, right?
Correct.
About 250 grand worth or so?
That's correct.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
George and all those involved, including the mayor, thank you for doing this. This is a thankless job to deal with another government agency like this, especially one that has, they've got a reputation for being tough to get a hold, tough to get their attention and tough to deal with, so.
Bill, you have no idea.
I'm just, well, I'm saying thank you, so there you go. It's a, it's a thankless job for everybody here, so it's, I'd say you got it done, so it's a victory, but congratulations.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Yeah, I'd also like to congratulate the mayor and George on successfully negotiating through all this. This was win-win, and it's a no-brainer. It's good for the village, it's good for the forest preserve, and I think it's a strong statement on government in Illinois, that even when you offer a win-win solution, they're mistrustful, right? It takes so long to get something so simple across. So I'm glad we finally got it here. Makes a ton of sense and good for everybody. Thank you.
Any other comments? So as you might imagine, I have a few, because I'm really thankful to finally see this before the board. It goes back to 2017. Back when I learned on what we're spending on the nature center, as we call it, I was appalled. You know, I voted with everyone and approved the spending and all of that because I couldn't win the battle. It was pretty obvious it was going to happen. They'd already spent a bunch of money on it, they were going to spend a bunch more on it. But, and the whole pie in the sky idea that we were going to be able to have, like, all these buses were going to go there. I'm like, no, they're going to go to the Little Rock Schoolhouse, they're not going to come here. And you just could not convince the board of that. And there's no question that it was a nice addition for open lands, because it was mostly donated, a big portion of it was donated, the wetlands and all that. But it's almost impossible to develop that area. But like I said, the idea that kids are going to come there and buses was absolutely ludicrous. It frankly was another example of our open lands commission at the time, that it was given $20 million blank check. They forgot their charter was to acquire, preserve, and maintain open lands, because they actually acquired it, upgraded it with the last of their money, and then the village, out of a different pool of money, our general fund, paid another couple million bucks to finish it. So it was, you know, they not only spent their money, but more. And they completely forgot about preserving and maintaining. And obviously, maintaining a nature area, as well as wetlands, is not in our wheelhouse. We don't have the in-house capability to maintain a bird habitat or the native plantings, et cetera. But when I saw the parcel, I thought, man, it's right across the street from McGinnis Loop. I wonder if the forest preserve might be interested in this parcel. It's right across the street, it's got a building, they don't have any, you know, they don't have any offices down here. They have the skills to maintain it. And given, at the time, Cook County Forest Preserve District was my biggest client, I reached out to my contact there to determine their interest. He was very, very high on the idea, really liked it. And since we had just put $3 million into the project, I asked our staff, hey, what might we want to exchange? Anything we do want to get out of the forest preserve, they're notoriously very difficult to deal with, and they notoriously try, really try and stick it to municipalities. So whatever we could get, we should try and get through all this. They came up with some ideas, including tree mitigation fees, which we got, permanent easements along 143rd Street widening, and also an easement extending north from West Avenue, like George said, which basically makes it safer entrance for Park School. And the other benefit of this is we no longer have to pay to maintain this property. And the property, you know, obviously is still in Orland Park. So you would think the forest preserve is getting, what, about 10 times the value out of this that we're getting, that it would have been done quickly. Because one of the more obvious good government projects I've seen, but still took seven years. The forest preserve tried to squeeze us for everything and then some. Like, and frankly, it wasn't until we said, we're willing to walk, we're done. This just isn't worth our time anymore. You guys are being so difficult. Then all of a sudden, they caved, and it moved in a couple months after that. Our open lands people actually opposed this, and they, and I quote, "We would no longer own it, it wouldn't be in Orland Park." My response is, are they picking it up and moving it to Lyle or to Kenkeke? And at the time, our open lands commission had a relationship with the Chicago-based Open Lands Group that went to work opposing this. And they worked very hard opposing this, and it was all, it was all political BS, frankly. The forest preserve and the village worked hard and long to appease them, and finally, seven years later, we're getting it done. We are getting what we wanted. The forest preserve is getting a very nice piece of property for their portfolio, and have agreed to fix up and maintain the building. All of the naming is still going to stay the same for the people who donated. The village will still be able to use the property for programming with preapproval from the forest preserve. This is really just a good government solution. It took too damn long, to be honest, which is maddening, as, you know, Bill might add. But the final result is really an example of what good government can do when you work together to find win-win solutions. So I'm thankful this is passing.
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Schuster Park, Phase 2 Construction Engineering Addendum.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve authorizing an amendment to the contract with White and Company in the amount of $24,250 to compensate White for Schuster Park Phase 1 work, excuse me, Schuster Park Phase 2 work currently being performed as part of Phase 1, and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Property Tax Appeal Board Appeals Representation Resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to pass a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Intervention in All 2023 Through 2025 Tax Year Appeals Before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
Second.
Any questions or comments? George, you want to just give a summary of what this is?
So, the village is part of consortium of other local governments that, for, for properties that make very large appeals over their property value, the consortium pulls their resources to, to, to work towards those appeals, to essentially fight the appeals to make sure it's fair. And this consortium has existed for a very, very, very long time. So it's, the membership is made up of the village, and then the Orland Park Library, the fire district. It also includes the school district 230. It, prior this year, it also included school district 135, but they have gone on their own. So the consortium now is just 230, the fire district, the library, and the village. And we will continue to look at where, where we need to come together and work on fighting any of the appeals that we have to.
And this could be really critical, because there's going to be a lot more appeals, given what we saw happen with the appeals board, although the commercial properties actually went down, so maybe they won't be as successful. But it's really important because, what people don't realize, if it gets past the board of review, that's why the board of review is so important, and why it's unfortunate that it's basically all people who are devoted to Fritz Kegy, is because the board of review, if they lower the, if they lower your assessment, the tax bills haven't been made yet, so basically, as I explained in that video that I had, it's a pie, and your piece of the pie is what you pay. Well, if the piece, if people get reviews, if board of review reduces, the pie gets a little smaller, and so the slices get differently, distributed differently. Problem is, once that goes out, if it goes to this, that money becomes a refund from every taxing body. So when we think we've levied $13 million, if they reduce $1 million worth of property tax, we're going to have $1 million out of our budget, because we're going to have to write checks for all that. So that's why this is pretty important for us. So, and, you know, frankly, you know, this makes sense to me, because we're constituents in businesses, so why spend the money across it? Pooling our resources is, we all have the best interest, to making sure we don't have to cut those refund checks. So, the question that, of course, this begs is, why is District 135 going this alone? I have no idea. It makes no sense. And ironically, years ago, they were the ones that suggested that we pool our resources and put this thing together, you know, like, like over 15 years ago. That board continues to make decisions that just confound me. As you remember, they turned down the $5 million, then turned down $3.2 million from us, then to threaten to sue us over 600 grand on a lawsuit that was surely a loser. Obviously, they haven't filed, so they must have known it was a loser. I still don't understand why you turn down a building that had $6 million to upgrade when you're, and then spend $17 million to add to five other buildings. You know, attacking our chief of police for a situation they let Fester for two years, that he tried to resolve. They turned down school resource officers at our junior highs. All of these things are head scratchers, this one too. This is, I mean, they're going to spend the same money that we, basically, they're going to spend the same money for one attorney that all five of us are spending for another attorney, when they could have just been part of that group. It just doesn't make any sense. So, but, that's, that's up to them, they're a separate board. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. I'm happy we have an Orland Park firm representing our interest in this, and that really, I think it really helps.
Did you ever think you'd hear Bill Healy say thank you to an attorney?
Certainly appreciate it, Bill. From professional to another.
Any other comments?
Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
A reminder, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Carol Baker, and, Mayor, I come as a friend. And I'm coming to a address I received on my doorknob today, this placard about the McGinnis Love Shared Use Path. My home backs up to Wolf Road. When Cook County widened Wolf Road a number of years ago, it created a horrible flooding problem in our backyard every time it rains. When we moved there 20 some years ago, there was a little bit of mushiness, but after Wolf Road was razed and widened, we get feet of water in our backyard. And we've had many conversations with, with officials here in the village. We've been appreciative of the conversations. We know that the problem happened because of the way that the swale was increased when Wolf Road was widened. And we're aware of that, and there was a conversation between the village and Cook County, and there was a plan for this to be resolved, when the farmland along 139th Street between Wolf Road and 110th Avenue was rezoned for a residential agreement. I believe the family of Verdoliak bought the land and built a home on a corner of it. The rest of it has not been developed, it is set empty. The planned resolution to the flooding problem has not been resolved. We are desperately hoping that with what you have planned to do with this path will include fixing the drainage problem there, or that path is going to be flooded all the time as well. I know that there will be a meeting on the 15th. I will be sure to attend to hear more about the engineering plan, but I just wanted to put it on your map that there's already an issue along the same pathway that you wish to build. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So Kreschid will be attending that meeting and can answer all your questions about how the project is engineered. And essentially, the path will address the issues the path causes, but it won't be addressing any other issues unless they're pretty simple to do. So if you want to add what you know.
So, that's true, Mayor, but we are also, right now, in the design of that ditch that the lady mentioned. And we're going to be using Cook County's funds that they have allocated for us, that will be used to fix the ditch along Wolf Road, as well as along 82nd Avenue. So those are the two projects that are currently in design that will address the...
So this is a known problem that you're planning on addressing as part of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And specific questions you can ask him at the meeting, and he'll have that, those documents with him. Doesn't have it in front of him right now. So, thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else to come up?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and board of trustees. Mr. Mayor, and your response to Trustee Healy's comments earlier, you said you had some comments prepared about properties that are subject or proposed for annexation with regards to any animals or grandfathering of Cook County ordinances or legislation. Could you share your comments on that? I understand this is comments and not questions, so if not, I appreciate that, and we'll follow the proper channels through your offices here. Thank you.
Thanks. I thought I addressed it. So, properties are grandfathered in when they come in, and so, George, you could probably address this.
I think Dennis can also confirm this, but especially now with that extension that we have right now. If there are, and that's why we always seek voluntary annexation first, because we want to work these things out amicably ahead of time. So now with this opportunity, hopefully, hopefully there is something that we can come to terms with. So what I would recommend is getting in touch with our staff, whoever is the contact person in the letter for the notice, and hopefully, we could come to some kind of terms on a pre-annexation agreement that will resolve the animal issue.
So if you voluntarily annex, you can address all the issues that you're concerned about, and you can, you can make sure that those are codified, you know, for while you have ownership, right? And then when you transfer ownership, usually, that's the way that works, right?
Correct.
Usually, then when you transfer ownership, it has to convert to, come into compliance to village codes on things. So, but that's all spelled out, which is why we reached out a couple of years ago, and did so a couple of times, trying to get voluntary annex, annexation. I think, how many, like, a handful of people voluntarily annexed, or went through the process anyways?
Yeah, I think the, as far as voluntary annexations, there was, there was one that we were working with, and...
There's one, I'm sorry. There's one there.
It's not done yet.
Yeah, it's about to be done.
And that one's very complicated.
Yeah.
It's not a single little, it's not a house, just a small house. It's, I would call it, I would call it an estate slash compound. It's huge. So it's, it's not a simple situation in their case. It's a lot more house than any of us could ever dream of affording. And so, there's a lot more to it in their case, but for most people, it would be pretty simple to, to do that, so.
When it came up for voluntary, a couple of years ago, I remember, there were a number of properties that are not part of the silverware, like those communities, were included, and it would cost a lift station to be added, if those were present.
Well, so what would happen in a voluntary annexation is that, even if you wanted sewer, we're not going to pay for that sewer. So, so, you know, in that case, you know, we would welcome you connecting to sewer and water, but we're not, just like a development coming in, and they're going to have to pay to connect, so that would have to happen. So, in the case where you're still on well and septic, and you voluntarily annex, and you don't want to pay those costs, you would stay on well and septic. And, and that would be something I would think that would remain grandfathered, because I think we have plenty of areas that, because the sewer and water would have to go to the, probably, because the expense would have to be shared by everybody there, and typically, that doesn't happen, right? So, that's why you have, that's why you have Fernway, for example. They already had water through Illinois American Water, but they didn't have, they didn't have storm sewer. So they still don't have storm sewer. They still are under a ditch system. And when we redid it, but we did redo their roads, so their roads were horrible, built to Cook County standards, and we brought them up, because they've been part of the village for a long time. So we spent $10 million, and I know I heard all about how, oh, we don't spend any money on Fernway, because you think everybody else is wealthy, blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, per home, I think any of us would love to have the amount of money that was just put into your neighborhood to bring you back up to speed. So at some point, when your roads need to get redone, it'll be the village redoing them, which I think is beneficial relative to the county.
And relative to wells, it's... And relative to wells, it, it's, it's tricky now in the state of Illinois, and especially in Cook County, sometimes, and especially septic, depending on the size of the parcel, once a septic fails, they, the county may not issue another septic license. And then, at that point, and, and that's, this is my experience, there are, there are unincorporated areas that are begging to come into incorporated areas because, without, obviously, a septic or whatever well system that was in place. So now that, the, the mechanism is in place, but it always is the cost of the homeowners, the subdivision, and there's a way for the village to coordinate those efforts. There's a way to fund it through an SSA or something like that, because obviously, a connected system is, brings a lot of value to a property.
Any other comments?
Board comments?
Board comments. Trustee Compass?
Oh, boy. Good evening. I'd like to take this moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to our amazing staff for their extraordinary efforts in making the 21st Taste of Orland Park a resounding success. This year marked a significant milestone. Keep those hands ready, because there's another on coming. This year marked a significant milestone as we kicked off a new decade of the Taste at our fantastic new venue. Standing on that stage on Saturday was a surreal experience. It's truly inspiring to witness just so many people coming together to celebrate our community. It was a specially touching moment to see so many enthusiastic, enthusiastic and respectful honor of our veterans on Saturday night as well. And to pull off such an event over three days required immense effort and passion from all of our staff. While walking around the path, it was just incredible to overhear so many residents and visitors thrilled with the new location and stage. I didn't even have to ask too many people what they thought. They were willing to tell me, or, you know, just even hear, overhearing it as I walked by. Many of the acts also expressed their appreciation for the stage, and we know that word of mouth is already spreading amongst the artist community. We didn't pay them to say that. They, they were freely admitting that they loved this new stage. And I thought the drone show was absolutely the perfect end for this weekend. It was a, it was, it was a great event and something that most people hadn't seen before. I'd only seen one before, and this one was better than the first one I saw. Positive feedback from just so many speaks volumes about the hard work and the dedication all of you put into this event. And to Ray Piattone, our Director of Recreation, my deepest thanks for a job exceptionally well done. I understand the sleepless nights, the meticulous planning that went into making this weekend a success. Your leadership and commitment ensured that everything went smoothly, and the whole weekend was truly amazing. Thank you for your dedication and for your hard work, and since the mayor called on me first, and I know all my fellow trustees are going to say I stole their thunder, I'd like to give them this opportunity to thank you, especially Ray. Once again, thank you to all staff members who contributed. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed. You've set a high standard for the future, however, so I can't wait to see the 22nd year of the Taste. And here's to many more successful events in our new veneer space. Thank you.
Trustee Katsinas?
I just continue what Sean's, or Trustee Compass is saying. Also, Public Works, I mean, a huge shout out to Public Works. The grounds were so impeccably clean. They were emptying garbage. They were so polite, working in the heat. Everyone who worked in that heat, it was rough just to attend it, let alone work in it like you all did. So, I just admire you, and also, thank you very much to our police department. They did an outstanding job. Fortunately, there were no incidents speak of, and you saw police officers all over in addition to the Orland Fire District. So thank you to all, all staff, and more importantly, thank you to the residents that attended. Both, you know, people that live here and people that didn't live here may want to live here now after attending this event. So, thank you to all, and look forward to many more.
Trustee Reardon?
Thank you. First of all, I wish they were still here. They left the whole Edwards Realty Group. Congratulations to them. They, it's been a long road. I think they're coming up with, I mean, really creative ways to, to make this work over a long period of time with markets changing all the time and what they can, you know, put in this space. So I want to congratulate them. This is another major step. Like I've said this now probably three different times over the last three years about steps in this process, and this is a big one tonight that we're moving forward. I'm very happy to see that. Second, I'm, I'm very proud of our staff and our, our legal team. I know there's a lot of motion in the room about the annexations, but I am very confident that we are following the law, and I think there was a little misguided information out there about why we're doing this or our motivation. It is not to get your extra couple thousand dollars of taxes. That is absolutely not it. And the gentleman that wants to look into all our books, bring it on. I mean, I don't know where that venom came from, but that is not at all what we're looking to do here. I am sure the letters went out. I'm sure, you know, because I've gotten letters from all kinds of things over the last 15 years I've lived here. It lays out exactly what you need to do, who you need to contact, and I, and I know, like everybody else, they come and go, they fall in the mail and you forget about it. But I'm confident the letters went out correctly, and this is the process. Come talk to us. We're not unreasonable, and I, I'm very hopeful that we can work out, you know, that there's, your property is safe and your goats are safe, and my, actually, I remember my daughter, my, she was about 10 then, went to one of these goat yurkys. I have a picture of her, like, sitting or almost, like, squatting on top of a goat at one of these things. So, that's not our goal, is to, you know, shove things down your throat and shove sidewalks down your throat. I mean, so, again, a lot of emotion, I get it, but we're very reasonable up here. You can see, we were happy to table it. We're, we would be great if we had to do zero forced annexations. If everybody came to the table and we worked out a deal with everybody, that would be great. We're looking at the bigger interest. The mayor laid it out. That's why I didn't have comments earlier, because I was very confident in his ability to lay out exactly why we're doing this. Come talk to us. I, I think there's a little disconnect there, but I don't think it's from our staff. That's why I want to make sure, I think, that you guys, I'm sure you did that correctly. I will jump on the bandwagon for the Taste. Thank you to all of our vendors as well. I know that, I mean, I'm not trying to repeat everything everybody said, but I have to imagine they had a very successful, you know, experience over three days. They were very busy. The numbers are sure, someone's going to talk about how many people came through. The lines were great. I think they moved quickly. People seemed to be enjoying themselves. I actually stood one time, kind of off to the side of the path, and I just watched people walk by, and every single person had a smile on their face. They were singing the song that was going on. They were laughing about something. I have young children, I have teenagers, and they were there. I watched them walk by with their friends. I saw couples, you know, sort of my age with, with children there, kind of walking around, managing them, their kids, and I saw older couples, like, you know, in their, in their 60s and 70s, kind of hand in hand, you know, walking through here, enjoying it as well. So, it was a really, really good feeling to be part of, you know, the, the process. It was certainly well before I was here, but I thought it was a fantastic plan to put it in place. I live right there, and people who complain about living right there, I, I don't know what you're talking about, because it's the nicest little walk over there, and I can walk back home after it was over. So, that was fantastic. And the last thing is, there's one more concert, August 17th. I think it's before we have our next board meeting, so please, please come out. It's One Vision of Queen. You guys are laughing at me over there? I'm talking too long? I'm sounding like Sean now?
No, that's all we're laughing about. They were saying, Cindy and Dennis and probably Bill were saying 60's not old.
70, 80, I don't know. I'm 53, so it's right around the corner for me. So, August 17th, The Vision of Queen is, is the last concert, so please come out, and if you can. It's a fantastic venue. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your comments. Trustee Healy?
Well, to follow up on Brian's thing, where we're addressing the people who were speaking before, whatever, that, that comment about the audits not being here and that we're trying to, that's so far from the truth. This guy, I mean, a little learning is a dangerous thing. If you don't know what, what you're doing, you know, you should make a comment about it, but that reason the audits are later is because the audit firms had a hard time staffing this, and it's no excuse, but that's on their contract to do it. It's hard to find good government, it's hard to find government accounting people and auditors, let me tell you. So, you can't pay enough for these people.
Yeah, and I, just to add on that, nobody's more transparent than we have been over the last, you know, year, since you started. This is all online. There's nothing to hide here about what's happening about the audit, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's nothing there. It's just the victim of circumstances with the staffing by the previous firm who are no longer here, and you have to understand the techniques that it takes to update that. Outside of that, I think the, I was going to make the same, exactly the same comments that Sean made, you know, which is kind of strange, but you got the same first or whatever. But Cindy said that everything went out without a thing, and I'd like to just relate one little thing that, that I, I witnessed at the, at the event, and there was a little ruckus as I was walking by the ice cream place, the rainbow cone or whatever on Saturday night. I noticed the six policemen went in and grabbed a guy out of, out of one of the porta potties. He was doing something, you know, he must have been from out of town or whatever. He was doing something bad. You didn't ask for my help, which I'm, well, I got over that quickly, but, but, but what struck me about it, which I found unusual, is that on all the things I see on TV, everybody pulls out their phone and starts filming, hoping the police make a mistake. Nobody pulled out a phone here. In Orland Park, we love our police. They're, they, and they acted so professionally there, and that it was, it was really a pleasure to, to see this knucklehead get dragged away, and I'm very proud of the way the police handled that, and also, and proud of the way the Orland Park people, you know, were, no words, just support for you guys. So it was, that was good. So, thank you for, for that, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Trustee Healy. And as I realize, one of the reasons I go last is sometimes to clean up some of what Bill Healy talks about. But, so, yes, the one individual who came here with threats and warnings and, you know, had to obviously make sure we all knew he was an attorney because he's, he's threatening us. I mean, everyone here is smart enough to know what you're doing, so, believe it or not, we're all pretty intelligent people here, even if you don't think so. The, so, at the end of the day, as I pointed out, debt is down significantly if you actually look since when I took office, and fiscally, we've done amazing things. Obviously, since you live in unincorporated, you don't pay attention to that. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. And regarding audits, to Bill's point, audit, auditor not performing, being fired, replacing a finance director with a new finance director as we're getting a new audit firm on board, so it's just, that's all it is. So it's really that simple. So all that stuff is, you get it cleaned up, and nobody's more transparent than us. I mean, you're all watching. None of you watched this. My first two years, I tried to get things on video. I was blocked. So, you know, I was able to get it on audio at least, but that's, you know, so, there's no, I don't think there's anybody that's more transparent on this, and we've been broadcasting our planning commissions. We just heard about the downtown triangle. Do you recall when they did it initially, them having 13 meetings about it? No, they didn't. So, so, yeah, so, anyhow, so proud of all of that stuff. I also want to, I got a call today from Mayor Hofeld of Homewood, and he wanted to pass out, and so please pass this on, Brian, to your Public Works folks. He really wanted to thank us for stepping up and helping when they got hit by a tornado recently. So, thanks for giving some, you know, neighboring communities some help. We really appreciated that. So pass that on to your guys. He said they did a great job, and they're very professional, so, which they are. I also want to take this opportunity to address the ongoing permit situation, which we've all gotten calls about, but I think it's kind of died down a little bit, but still, as of last week, we'd received approximately 4,000 roof permits. I think there's still like 1,300 and some that are, we haven't addressed in some way. They're still coming in at a very, very high rate, and we're working hard to get through them, and we have staff working on it. Trustee Compass has started helping as well. I'm going to start helping too. So we've been set up to do that. And staff and I have also, and some of the board members have received demands that these resubmittals go back to the top of the pile, so I'm going to address that. I'm going to tell you right now, that won't happen. Staff's been directed that won't happen. And here's why. The majority of rejected permits come from the same group of people that keep screwing them up. 70% of the permits are approved and 30% are rejected, so it doesn't seem like it's overly confusing, because seven out of 10 are getting it right. If we were to give staff discretion on moving people to the top of the pile, it can lead to all kinds of issues. One, they're playing favorites. Two, the, you know, the next person asks, well, why not me? This person got moved up. Or third, they name dropped, and believe me, they name drop all the time. Oh, I know the mayor, I know the trustees. I can tell you that anyone, and I've told my staff this, anyone that's dropping my name doesn't really know me, because they know better. Okay? So, you know, additionally, if we were to actually do that and move them to the top of the pile, it rewards the people for not doing the permits right the first time, and which causes us to spend all this extra time answering questions, resolving complaints from, from their client as well as the contractor, dealing, the, the board dealing with their, their questions and their complaints. That's a lot of staff time, which, oh, by the way, instead of spending that hour dealing with you, they could have done three more permits. So, there would be no incentive for them to ever do it right the first time if we moved you to the top of the pile after you submitted incorrectly. In fact, it would incentivize you to do it wrong, us to fix it, so that you could make the process go faster. So we've given very clear direction to make no exceptions, and that's the easiest and fairest way to handle it in this permit crunch, so just, just to be clear. Next, just like the rest of the board, I want to thank all of our staff for an outstanding Taste of Orland. I'm, I'm going to miss a bunch of people here, okay? But Ray Piattone, our Recreation Director, his team, including Aaron Doreen, who handled all the talent during the, during the show, who, by the way, can't speak highly enough about our venue. They, they want to come back. It's professional. It's, it's, it's top, top shelf, first class. Also Greg, all of our park staff, all the Public Works doing the setup and the cleanup and working throughout the weekend, our police department for ensuring that the event was safe. And you think about it, we had, you know, I know on Saturday night, we had 15,000 people on Saturday night. Think about that. The old site couldn't have handled half of that, of what we had that night. And, and yet, we had one incident, and, by the way, Bill, that person was a, a frequent flyer, known contacts with some, with some issues, the mental, well, the mental health related issues, and our officers took care of it and got them out of there, and that was it. Didn't see riots, you didn't see fights, you didn't see any of that stuff. You just saw people having a good time, which was absolutely fantastic. So, so I want to thank everyone for that. So, it was our 21st overall, but it was our first at a new venue, and I think we, you know, we haven't been able to count before, but this was a record, because we had a pretty big attendance last year, and there's a lot more people went through the gates this year than last year. So, you know, so over three days, we shortened hours, and we still had, you know, kind of the record attendance. From, from the working team to Public Works to Rec, just making sure everything was right to begin with, have all logistics right. It worked all weekend. It worked well, and they worked all weekend throughout the village, and our residents were, had a great time and were kept safe. So thanks to all of you. If, I mean, this is a new venue. The logistics were outstanding, the traffic flow, the entry into the park, the parking, the bathrooms, the, the bands, and finally, the drone show, which, for anyone that saw it, that was just awesome. It's, if you didn't see it in person, you know, you, you missed out, and for the, and I had a few of my friends that left, like, a couple songs before the end. They missed a great show. They would have been better off sticking around, and traffic flow was so fast out